We're missing some people here. Do we have a majority, a quorum? Oh, there's Sue.
Okay, that helps.
Seven minutes or three minutes?
Two.
One. Ross, Ryan's here. Sue.
Yeah, just Alderman Glad, I think.
Is he missing for tonight, Wayne?
No, no, he should be on here.
Okay.
Well, while we're killing time, if anybody ever tries a drink called Spin Drift sparkling water, it's horrible. And drift. Can't.
I kind of like it.
Really?
I don't put it good in it, but it's kind of a girl drink.
It all tastes fine with vodka.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That is, that is true.
Yeah. That would help it.
Your wife, your wife will be home in a minute.
He's the one who bought it.
Monty, did you see Alderman Glad in the waiting room at all?
I think he's popping in right now.
There you go, okay.
It says Andrew, I just admitted.
Yep, that's him, yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I made sure we had a flag tonight.
Yeah, nice. Good job.
Yes.
All right. See if he's on here. Alderman Glad, are you, are you on here?
I'm here.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get, uh, get started. What's that?
I'm sorry, I just didn't see Alderman Divine yet.
Yeah, he's on here.
Here. I'm sorry.
Awesome. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Uh, everyone, welcome to the Monday, August 16th city council meeting via Zoom. Uh, clerk, can you go ahead and call the roll?
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman McClatchy.
Here.
Alderman Harding.
Here.
Alderman Stratt.
Here.
Alderman Divine.
Here.
Alderwoman Miller.
Here.
Thank you very much. If you could please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. Republic, where we just stand. One nation. Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. For liberty.
Justice for all.
All right. Uh, before we get started, uh, with the agenda items, we'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? If so, go ahead and unmute yourself. I see none. Moving on with consent agenda. Is there any items that the council would like to, uh, pull for separate consideration? Alderman Santee.
Uh, yes, I need to pull item five F. Uh, that black party request is for families. I'm one of the four families, so I will be abstaining from that vote.
Okay. I don't know why I didn't get an invite. Hopefully we're getting an invite after that. Um, and then, uh, any other items being pulled for separate consideration by any other member? Alderman Glad, go ahead. Unmute.
Unmute, Anne.
Uh. As far as the special service area, uh, I guess this question would be for attorney McCardle. Um, if for some reason, uh, like lots one and two, uh, they are separate owners and if, uh, within 60 days after this is approved at the next meeting, um, what happens if, uh, the owner of lot two decides to, uh, object to this?
I can't remember Ross's lot two subject to this, uh, as well as lot one or just lot one?
It is because it's regional detention. So if they, if they object, they're in, they're not in compliance with the, um, the stipulations that are put on the development within the development agreement. So then ultimately the development would be put on hold, I guess.
Yeah, so the way SSA works, and I, I, I didn't do this one, so I'm not gonna answer specifics, but usually if there's a, this is a backdoor type of referendum. If there's an objection by a majority of the ownership, then it won't go through.
But there is a majority because there's only two, so one would be not majority, right, at 50%?
Right.
You don't go by the size of the lot, you go by how many owners.
Ownership, yeah.
Right. So that would be muted if so, if one objected?
Uh, I have to look at the statute again beforehand because, because you're right, it's weird that it's still only two owners, so.
Right. All I'm getting at is, is if, if you could look at that attorney McCardle and then maybe we could have wording that if for some reason, and again, I'm not sure exactly what the total procedure would wind up to be, but if the, if lot two were to object and they were not part of the SSA, uh, could we have it worded so that the onus would go on lot one completely? For this special.
We, we, we'd probably have to post, we'd probably have to have another hearing because you're changing the rules of the notice. The notice.
Okay.
Particular way, we'd have to change it and have another public hearing, but I think, but I'll look at all that before the meeting. I'll be ready for that. I didn't anticipate that.
Okay, I, I, like I said, I'm just looking at covering all bases. Uh, the other question I had was, or actually it's not a question, it's just a statement and that's the fact that, uh, you know, we're looking at these, uh, here we are again, uh, at a Zoom meeting because of COVID, uh, but yet we're moving ahead with all these, uh, special uses in the parks and whatnot, uh, which is kind of surprising. And maybe because it's outdoors, I don't know, but it's still a congregation of a lot of people. And that was just a statement and I'm done.
Thank you. Any other, uh, consideration for any other items by any of the council members? See none. Looking for a motion in a second to approve five A through five E and five, uh, G through J.
I would make that motion.
Alderman, Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Miller?
I'll make the second.
Thank you. Discussion on these items by council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Um, Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Divine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Stratt?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
And Alderman Santee is abstaining from that vote, correct?
No, I, I'm voting yes for this one.
Oh, this one, thank you.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Uh, the item that was pulled by Alderman Santee was five F, a black party request on Dale Street on September 18th, 2021. Uh, want to open it up for discussion by council? None. Looking for a motion in a second to approve five F as presented. Alderman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve it as requested.
Thank you. Alderman Harding for a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Stratt?
Yes.
Alderman Divine?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
And council, next item on the agenda is individual action items, uh, six A and six B, uh, is for, uh, Chen, uh, Jackpot Cafe. Uh, just so everyone's aware, this was on the agenda for last meeting. We had to pull it due to background checks not being back. So it's now, uh, before you tonight. Uh, and, uh, we don't see any issues with this, so we're gonna go ahead and move on with six A and looking for a motion in a second to approve. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of liquor license, uh, class A from Chen Jackpot Cafe to Annie's as Annie's McHenry LLC as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman Divine?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion by council. I'm gonna open up for public input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. Clerk, please call the roll for six A.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Divine?
Yes.
Alderman Stratt?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
And council, next item is six B regarding the video gaming side of the Annie's McHenry LLC. Looking for a motion in a second to approve six B as presented. Alderman McClatchy?
Yes, since we approved A, I, uh, I moved that we approved, uh, B.
Thank you. Second by Alderman Stratt?
Yes, so motion.
Discussion by council. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just want to bring out the fact that, uh, uh, because that hurt for people, another video gaming place and, uh, all we're doing is approving, uh, a change in ownership of, uh, the place and, uh, we're not actually only, uh, again, adding to another video gaming place. Uh, sometimes people see this all the time for video gaming and they just think we keep going on and on and on with throwing them. Not saying that we haven't been, but, uh, this isn't one of those cases.
Thank you. Any other discussion by council? Open it up for public, uh, comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding six B? See none. Clerk, please call the roll for six B as presented.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Stratt?
Yes.
Alderman Divine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Harding? Um, Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six C is a motion to approve an issuance of a class C liquor license to Munson Ski and Marine located at 3112 West Lincoln Road and subject to the approval, a motion to approve an ordinance amending the limitation of a number of class C licenses. Uh, go ahead and ask for a motion in a second to approve six C as presented. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the liquor license for Munson Ski and Marine as presented.
Thank you. Second. Alderman, uh, Stratt?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion by council. Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Uh, just the definition of a class C liquor license is again a packaged liquor license, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions by council? Up, Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, is this gonna be served inside or are they gonna have something outside to serve this? You know, are they?
My understanding is on premise, so, uh, Monty, correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as it's on premise, is that correct?
I, I couldn't hear the question though, I'm sorry.
In, is this gonna be served inside or outside as packaged goods? I mean, if they really want to have packaged goods outside, it could be on premise.
Like outside of their building, like out on the dock?
On their property, right? As long as it's on their property, I don't think there's any issues with that.
I don't think so.
Yeah, there, there's no issues with this. Package liquor can be sold inside. They could have a cooler that's plugged in on the outside and sell it from the counter. It's packaged, so it's never being opened and served. Uh, it's just being sold to go.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions by council? Open up for public, uh, comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none. Clerk, please call the roll for six C as presented.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Stratt?
Yes.
Alderman Divine?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
And council, next item on the agenda is a motion to approve an ordinance granting assigned variance to Thornton's fueling station, 2108 West Route 120 to allow two freestanding signs and additional 98 square foot sign area on the freestanding signs. Uh, Director Pollarecki, you want to go ahead and present this item?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, community development department received a signed variance request for the Thornton's fueling station at 2108 West Route 120. Uh, staff has reviewed the request and feels the signed package proposal falls within the McHenry municipal code sign variance guidelines. Um, given the fact that Thornton's does have frontage on Chapel Hill and 120, uh, this is the reason for the variance request. They're looking to have sign, freestanding signs on, on both frontages. So, uh, if there's any questions, uh, I'm available and then Paul Wilson from Thornton's is also available online tonight.
Thanks, Ross. Appreciate it. Um, open, uh, actually I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion in a second for six D as presented. Alderman Stratt?
Make that motion as presented.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Miller?
I'll make the second.
Thank you. Discussion by council on this item. Alderman Santee?
Yeah, um, as I look at it, Ross, are they defined as like a corner lot in the city of McHenry or because of, uh, the chocolate factory, it's not designated as a corner lot?
Um, it's, it's interesting. It's, it's technically not a corner lot.
A lot, okay.
But it has frontages on two major roads, so.
Exactly, and thus the request for Chapel Hill. Okay.
Right.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, Alderman Glad, go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to bring up is just the fact that I can remember years, years ago, uh, there was a bank that was coming into town and, uh, we just, uh, ringed them as far as signage and whatnot and would not allow everything, uh, that their normal development brings. Uh, I think, uh, to some extent, uh, Thornton's, uh, every facility I've seen go up, uh, is very professionally done and it looks good. Uh, it only makes sense. I know, I don't think in Lakemore they have two signs on the corner there, but then again, it's just a minor street and now there's two major streets, two major frontages. I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by council? Open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding six D? You none? Clerk, can you please call the roll for sixty as presented?
Sure. Alderman Stratt?
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Divine?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six E, motion to authorize staff to proceed with a plan preparation and publicly bid the 2022 road resurfacing program as presented and to authorize staff to solicit proposals for engineering assistance. Uh, Director Strange, you want to go ahead and present this item?
Thank you, Mayor Jeff. Uh, yeah, so just for clarification, right now we're not under contract for any engineering assistance. However, due to the size of the program, it may become possible at some point, so, um, this, this is, uh, we're planning on completing a $4 million program this year and most of you were in attendance at the July 26th bookworks committee meeting. So we made a recommendation, the bookworks committee meeting, the recommendation was moved forward for council's approval. So again, we are seeking, uh, permission to publicly bid and we're doing this because we're bidding it out actually in advance of the beginning of the FY 2223 fiscal year for spring bidding, similar to what we did last year. And then also if engineering assistance becomes necessary, we're seeking your concurrence to allow us to, uh, solicit that, that assistance. So we, we seek council approval.
Thank you, Troy. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion in a second to approve sixty as presented. Alderman Glad?
Yes, so moved.
Second, Alderman Harding?
I second that.
Discussion by council. Alderman Divine?
Yes, I had a question about, I don't know if this is a typo or, um, it's supposed to be there as far as PCI rating. Windridge Drive with a rating of 46 surrounded by 1821. Um, that must be a mistake because there's over 160 other roads with a lower rating than that.
Troy, you want to go ahead and?
Yes, so, uh, a- as you can see on the attached final program locations attached to the supplement, Windridge was not included in the original recommendation upon discussion at the committee level. Um, it was recommended that River Stream Drive was kicked out and moved into a future program year and Windridge inserted. They balanced fairly well financially and that was the recommendation of the committee.
Okay, so are we going by the PCI rating or are we just gonna pick and choose from now on?
We are going per the recommendation and direction of the committee.
Okay, well, I won't support this on if that's case because there's plenty of other roads that need more work than this, so, thank you.
Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, just the fact that, uh, the committee, uh, received a, uh, petition that was signed by every, uh, owner on Windridge Drive requesting, uh, the road that has not been touched since the development was started back in the, uh, early eighties, I guess. And that's why it was put on there. Uh, more so than anything else, uh, again, we are elected and, uh, to represent, uh, the residents of the city of McHenry and, uh, the residents spoke and that's why, uh, the committee decided to, uh, move on with this and, uh, Alderman Divine, you were there at that meeting, I believe, uh, am I not right?
Yes, I was.
You didn't have anything to say at that time. Now all of a sudden at council, you're bringing this all up. Uh, nobody's bringing up this, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I, I was still talking and that's the fact that nobody's bringing up the fact that how many, how many streets are in, uh, Lakeland Park, uh, at this particular time, uh, that are being done and, uh, hey, Lakeland Park, uh, I've always said that if we don't take care of, uh, streets in Lakeland Park, and I've said this several times in the past, the fact that, uh, we can't afford for the base of those roads to go because, uh, reconstruction of those could be totally so expensive that, uh, it's just ridiculous because of the peat and everything else that's underneath those roads. But, uh, again, uh, this was done because of the request of residents of the city of McHenry and it wasn't one or two. It was an entire, uh, street, uh, that basically signed that petition.
All right, Alderman Divine, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Reason I didn't speak up at the committee meetings, I'm not on that committee and we, you know darn well that road is in that bad shape, Alderman Glad. I have roads here that haven't been touched in 10 years in my ward. And I've driven Windridge. It's not, it's not that bad. It doesn't need to be pushed up to the front of the line. I can, I can get, I can get petitions from everybody in this ward. If that's the case, do I get Ward six get their roads done next year then? If that's the case? No.
In your hands there, uh, I did not, uh, initiate this, uh, uh, petition. Uh, it was by a resident that lives on Windridge and, uh, uh, but I have to follow and have to, uh, go by, uh, the will of the people and that's what we were, uh, basically elected for. Um, I've supported the roads that, that are being proposed in Lakeland Park. Uh, there's not like one or two streets. There's quite a few there. I also, uh, can say that, uh, when we look at the criteria and I'm still gonna bring that up is as far as the traffic data that they bring up. Um, you know, they throw out a lot of different criterias to us. Um, and we have to look at sometimes not just the condition of the roads and, uh, and what the Illinois Department of Transportation deems these roads. Maybe they, they look at them as, as far as how they were built, as far as what their ratings are, but, uh, you know, I take a look at this, uh, roadway and I see Dartmoor, which again is not being done at this point in time. And again, it's because of, uh, grant monies that we're waiting for, but I also look at, uh, Waters Edge. That's a connection from Dartmoor to, uh, uh, Oakwood and, uh, that's not considered a collector road and it definitely is because most people that come across that bridge, uh, they come up Windridge to, uh, Oakwood. I mean, there's more traffic that goes from Windridge to Oakwood than there is that comes down 120 to, uh, to, to Royal. I mean, uh, you know, we need, uh, in the future to take a look at our roadways as far as where, uh, the traffic is. And maybe we need to take traffic counts, uh, rather than relying on what the, uh, Illinois Department of, uh, Transportation says because you know what? They're not here. They don't take counts on all these minor streets. You know, I take a look at and see, uh, Oakwood and I, I take a look at some of, uh, I, I could take a look at Meadow and I could tell you right now that Oakwood probably carries three times or four times the amount of traffic that Meadow does. Do I say that we shouldn't touch Meadow? Uh, no, I'm not saying that. Uh, you know, I take a look over here and I take a look at your Prairie and Prairie carries more traffic than most any, any other street in that subdivision, um, because it's cut through. You just admitted it and yet that is not, that's considered just a regular neighborhood street. So like I said, we need to look at the criteria a little bit more as far as where the use of the streets are in our city and not, not necessarily just, uh, what the ratings are and, uh, and, and look at it that way. And then again, we're still looking at the same old program that, uh, yes, uh, I commend Troy and his staff for all the pennies, nickels, dimes, quarters, whatever they can gather up to, to do bigger, better street programs. Uh, Alderman Divine, I've been doing this for 25 years, believe me. I, I know, I know what I'm talking about as far as streets because I've analyzed it so many times. You know, this, uh, getting, uh, streets, uh, inventoried by laser is nothing new. Uh, by a comment I made at 98, uh, Fred Batshup at the time who was the director and, and, and got all that going for us. And it was a great program, but the only thing is, is we never kept up with it because of the lack of funds. Uh, with the amount of, uh, funds that, uh, Troy and his staff have been able to find for us, uh, uh, I commend them as, as far as the fact that, uh, we're doing so much better as far as the amount of roads that we're doing. So.
Alderman Santee, go ahead.
Um, try to keep this in as simple as terms as possible. When you look at, uh, page 89 and, um, you, you see his graph of the pavement ratings and then you match it up to the, uh, to the streets that are actually in those, those three actually very poor, poor and even fair, uh, some of those 18%ths. Uh, we could, we could redo all those roads in all those three columns today, tomorrow. Uh, and it's, you know, I, I, I see where Alderman Divine's coming from and, and when I drove through his ward, uh, yeah, I, I did notice definitely, uh, more roads that could be done. I think there's probably a few in everybody's ward. Uh, with this aggressive type of, um, maintenance that we're doing, um, I'm hoping to be able to satisfy, being the, the chair, hopefully we'll be able to satisfy, especially maybe slightly a focus towards, uh, Lakeland Park and some of the areas west of, uh, of, uh, Crystal Lake Road. Uh, but you just take, take those readings, take the list of streets, give yourself some time, take a drive, uh, hopefully most of you have and just for yourself, see it and, and, you know, and then I will reiterate what Alderman Glad did say is that, uh, one time, I don't know how many years ago, it's probably six to eight years ago, but, uh, everybody on Valley signed, um, well, most of the people on Valley signed an agreement to get their street done and it got it taken care of, I believe, within the next year, the year and a half. Uh, and there was definitely some bad conditions of Valley. It wasn't all bad, but, uh, there was definitely some bad conditions. So I, I just say, look at these graphs, follow the streets, check them for yourself. I mean, do a visual. Uh, we don't have that equipment with us in our cars to laser it, but just by driving it, you can tell. And, and virtually every street that's from yellow into the red, we could be doing in the next year or two. And that's just a fact. Um, we're catching up and we're trying And that's just a fact. Um, we're catching up and we're trying to catch up as soon as we can. And with this uh. Four million dollars, I really believe we're going in the right direction. I'd love to be able to do this every year. I don't think we'll be able to get that number, but it's fantastic. That would be doing that much next year. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman Divine.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, of course, I'm fighting for the streets in my ward, but I also is. The city in general, I just don't think it's right that we're bumping up a road that isn't that rated that bad. There's so many roads that are in worse condition than that. We all know that. We all drive to town. We know that and. Thirty signatures say they want their road fixed, but we have, you can go through this town and ask every single person if they need their road. Their roads fixed. I just can't see we're moving that road all the way up here. So you guys do what you want to do. Okay.
Comments by council? Open up for public comment. Is there any public from uh public? Any public comment from the public at this time? See none.
I just, I just, Mayor, if I could just say, it's just, just the, this is more of a highlight. Uh, Alderman Glad and Alderman Santi already said it, but this is a, this is not insignificant. This is a four million dollar road program. I just want to uh again compliment Troy and his staff on the changes they've made, uh, you know. And their operations over there and uh and being able to present a four million dollar road program, I think probably for the first time. Uh, in McCaffrey, other than when when the roads were bonded, other than we actually bonded to do roads, this is not bonded. This is. This is a combination of funding and and I just again want to compliment Troy and his staff on being able to come up with this.
I second that, you know, and and Troy, uh, to you and your entire team, there's a ton of people over here uh on this Zoom from Public Works. Uh, but you know, they've always stepped up and done a great job and since Troy's taking the helm over with Public Works and uh. You know, even Wurch and everybody else that's on this call has done a great job and uh, you know, you see Woodstock raising their tax over the next four years to to get roads done. Um, and it's great to see that we're not doing that at this time and we're actually putting four million dollars towards our roads. So I uh. Commend all of you from Public Works and city staff for getting this done and council about to approve it. So. And and Alderman Divine, I do agree with you. I do, you know, there's a, there's, there's unfortunately, there is streets that. Uh, maybe could wait another five years and move on with other streets. Um, I totally agree with you on this one, but uh at the end of the day.
True.
It's up for a vote now, so uh clerk, please call the roll for six E as presented.
Alderman Glad.
Yeah.
Alderman Harding.
Yes.
Alderman Strack.
Yes.
Alderman Divine.
No.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Santi.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Uh, discussion item, uh, Troy is going to be presenting in just in a discussion regarding status of a water and sewer fund. Future capital maintenance improvements, projections and base fees. A fun conversation to have, but Troy, go ahead.
All right, let me, let me get the screens share set up first. Because I gotta get the PowerPoint going and share the screen on the one side while I get my notes up on the other side.
We teed you up being so good and now you have to have this conversation.
There you go. Presentation is up, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. See, that wasn't bad at all. That was. That was very smooth. All right.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, members of city council. Uh, thank you for your time. We put together this presentation to brief you on. The overall financial status of the water sewer fund and to discuss a few major topics, including our operating rates, our base fees. Significant upcoming water and sewer funded projects and also presents a a long term capital projection. Uh, it's actually a ten year capital projection, which we as staff have been working on for the better part of a year. So some of you may remember, one of the items we were tasked with coming out of the twenty nineteen strategic planning sessions was a long term. Projection of the city's capital needs. So uh, we're opening with the water sewer. Fund side of things, but this will be followed by a similar presentation for general funded items at a later date. So uh, in order to give everyone a sense of context, what we're talking about here with the overall fund. This slide in front of you shows the ten year history of the fund balances for the water and sewer funds. The green bars are uh operating improvement in operating and improvements fund balance and then the blue bars are the fund balance for capital development. Fees. So uh, so if you remember the discussion we've had in the past about capital development fees on the water sewer fund. Side of things for a couple of these housing developments that have come in. This fund, this blue bar fund is the fund that those fees go into. Uh, you can see their overall resources bottomed out in about eighteen nineteen and then since then, they've been, they've been picking back up. Most of that I would, I would attribute to the increase in the capital development fees, residential construction mostly. And then also we have taken a little bit more uh conservative approach with the expenditure of our capital in terms of how we're spending. Our our water sewer base fees. Um. One thing that's important to note, so this chart is generated based off of the appendix A spreadsheet. And the fund balances shown on the spreadsheet are bigger than what's on the chart. And the reason for that is because. We carry a certain amount of money in our operating and improvements fund, but. Three million dollars of that and at any given time is essentially being held, for lack of a better term, effectively held in escrow. Uh, to make three million dollars worth of debt service payments on the wastewater treatment plant every given year. So. All we may hold about four, three million is only really available to us to spend for capital. Um, and then it's also important to note in fourteen fifteen. Uh, two thousand fifteen, the uh, the rate study or implemented the rate study. We implemented these these base fees, which everyone sees on our water sewer bills. It's six dollars per billing cycle or every two months and it generates about four hundred thousand dollars a year for us to spend on water sewer capital. Improvements. So uh, later on, we're going to be discussing what this amount. Accounts for in terms of our capital expenditures and capital planning. And also if we were to consider additional base fees, what specific items those base fees would be, would be attributed to. So. Uh, this next slide here is basically a, it's a history of our water usage and it's also a projection. Of our water usage for the next twenty years. So two thousand five to two thousand twenty is actual historical data and then. Twenty twenty and beyond is basically taking that snapshot at the year twenty twenty. Applying household growth of hundred households per year, two point five persons per household and and ninety day gallons a day. Of use per person per household, which are all fairly standard, industry standard numbers. And I would say high on the conservative side numbers. And uh, the the evaluation and examination of these projections is is very important for us to examine. In order to make good determinations and good decisions about major facilities expansion projects, both for water and wastewater. Based upon our current operating conditions and this assumed growth of a hundred households per year. We as a staff believe that our most likely necessary major facilities expansion would be the addition of a fifth water plant. So. Currently, we have four water plants and anywhere from ten all the way out to twenty years out. Uh, potentially sooner if the development really, really exceeds our expectations, we'd be looking at the addition of a fifth water plant. So that specific project will be discussed in a little greater detail, a little bit later in the presentation. So as you can see, our our usage peaked in the mid two thousands during the residential construction bubble. It's been steadily on the decrease ever since due to. Greater consumer awareness and more efficient fixtures becoming the norm. Every year, the the fixtures get more and more efficient and more people as they change out their antiquated fixtures. Install newer, more efficient ones. And then also those high numbers in two thousand five, two thousand six, you're you're also seeing. Probably quite a bit of of watering upside for all this new construction, the the amount of watering that has to be done is pretty heavy. And when you've got that amount of construction going on, it tends to uh really peak your demand. Um. Steve's, Steve probably has a little bit of experience in in what it was like uh actually on the ground when all this was happening, but um. We have obviously gone down from that that peak usage and and we're on a little more sustainable path. So our big ticket items that we have spent today. On the water sewer fund, there's really three items that have really, that have really hit those funds hard in the past, say, ten years. Obviously, everybody remembers the wastewater treatment plan consolidation project. Uh, it's funded through the SRF loan and it attacks on roughly thirty dollars per user per billing cycle. Uh, and we're going to be paying that for, it's a twenty year loan, so we're going to wrap up paying that out in twenty thirty seven. Uh, in two thousand ten, we had to complete sort of an interim improvement. Uh, and expand our conveyance capacity for sludge to the 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 future consolidated location south. That was completed for seven and a half million dollars in two thousand ten. That's another base fee that's on our water sewer fund bill. Uh, six dollars per billing cycle. And then the only project we have here that actually was not funded through any sort of a base fee or debt service fee. Is this water plant rehab. So that was completed in twenty twelve. The reason we did that was the iron filtration tanks and water plants who had failed. And needed replacement. There are also some significant building modifications that had to be done to move the tanks. Old tanks out and the new tanks in. And uh, referring back to that first slide. Uh, you can look at it on appendix A, that twenty twelve year, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, that was when the overall resources peaked. And then as that project was paid out, that's started the decline in the operating and improvements fund balances. So this slide covers our 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 upcoming big ticket items for the water sewer fund. All these will include both major capital improvement projects and then also there are some what I'm calling capital maintenance projects where we're not necessarily. Adding facilities, building out facilities, but but spending significant money to upgrade rehabilitate. And keep existing facilities in service. The last three items on the list here, water tower painting. Water main replacement and looping and universal sewer lining. These are, I would say they're all optional. They're associated with new base fees. And uh, we're going to be looking to counsel uh later on in the presentation regarding uh direction as far as what we're comfortable with. If we are to consider new base fees. The other projects at the top of the page, Route thirty one utility relocation cost. Uh, I'm assuming you all have some familiarity with that at that this point. Wastewater Treatment Plant Aeration and Phosphorus Improvements and Water Plant Five. These are, these are all projects that we would consider funding with capital development fees. So capital development fees. And we've discussed these fees as as development occurred. They are in their purest form intended for us to pay for. Expansion of our our facilities to accommodate population growth. So. Uh, you know, we uh, we talked about capital development fees, you know, school impact fees, more classrooms, parks impact fees. More parkland. It's no different with the water sewer fund. With, as we add population, we need to expand our facilities to accommodate this population. And that's what, that's what these projects specifically are about. So now we'll take a look at each project individually. So uh, as I mentioned before, you're all familiar with IDOT. Uh, Route thirty one utility relocation. IDOT is looking to reconstruct Route thirty one within the next five to eight years. Right now, they're saying four. Uh, officially, I I doubt they'll actually construct that soon. But that is the timeline that we are planning around. Our cost uh is a cost provided to us by IDOT will be approximately three million dollars. And it's a cost that we have to pay because we are operating our utilities in IDOT's right away at their permission. And we do this with the understanding that any future roadway improvements that happen. Like widening to five lanes may affect the placement of our utilities and we need to relocate our costs. So this is a cost we cannot avoid. And it is coming sooner or later. So I believe Derek has mentioned this at some point. One of the things we're considering to fund. This project is dedicating the three million dollars in code relief money from the federal government. Uh, it's something that's being considered right now. So if this allocation does happen, we should have this project pretty well covered. If it doesn't. Right now, based upon our cash flow models that we're looking at and our our other capital needs, just our baseline capital needs. We would need some sort of a debt service fee to fund this in the case that that three million dollars is not allocated for for these costs. Uh, current status of the project has got shown below. Obviously, you all remember the design contract with Patrick Engineering. We kicked it off next month. And uh, we believe that it's a very good decision to be working with Patrick on this one. Patrick is the phase two engineering consultant, so they're doing the plan. Production for the the reconstruction of Route thirty one plan. So. The thought is that the, they'll give us a direct line of communicate, communication to the designer and to IDOT to better coordinate our utility relocation because. There's a lot of it that that frankly is very sensitive and um. IDOT's not always the easiest agency to have clean line of communication with, but on this project and for this purpose. Hiring Patrick has definitely given us that. So we'll continue to update you on this project as as things develop. All right. And this is, this is the one, currently the one major wastewater capital project. That I would consider, that I would recommend the council consider funding, funding with capital development funds at some point in medium term future. So. Wastewater Treatment Aeration Ditch Upgrade. This project is not necessarily a facilities expansion project. It does not necessarily add capacity to the system. Um. But we do believe that while paying for this and means uh while paying for this out of capital development funds. We can still maintain the necessary capital development fund balances to pay for the construction of a fifth water plant, which. As I referred to earlier, is really our most immediate. Capital development funded project that that we are anticipating. So the, these funding scenarios are identified in the appendix E cash flows and we'll review those towards the end of the presentation. So this project, however, would be a facilities expansion enhancement that would potentially allow our overall treatment plant capacity. To accommodate future growth while still meeting future regulatory demands. Uh, essentially what the project would entail is a conversion of the existing aeration system. Right now, it's a mechanical disc aeration system. It's um, it's a much more, you know, physical system, whereas. What we'd be looking to convert it to is a bubble diffusion system, which is similar to the technology that's in the sequenced battery axers of our new plant. Uh, so essentially we're converting the aeration technology on the old ditches to the same technology that's in those new SBR cells. Uh, and Russ, if you had any uh details or or thoughts on this project that you wanted to share, um.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're right. It doesn't necessarily add capacity to the plant, but it positions us and allows us. Uh, to handle the requirements that we see are going to be coming with the new permits. Um, eventually this will, as Troy said here, the next ten years, we are going to have to redo the aeration system. Um, the sooner we can do it, the better. And this technology will give us a lot of uh. A lot of control with the plant. We'll be able to achieve better results. So it's not just a an expansion for more capacity. It will give us better. Results in the future, which the I E P A is going to be asking.
And and this project is not, is not new. It's not something we're we're springing on on you guys. It is, it has been included in our C I P document uh for the past several years. And as as Russ mentioned before, uh, while it won't necessarily increase these rated capacity numbers, it'll give us a better process. Control over our processes, which which may ultimately allow us to avoid having to pay for the project on the next slide. So this project is probably our greatest unknown for any of our our major facilities improvements we're discussing tonight. Uh, it's due to the ten year window the I E P A has given us to meet our new phosphorus discharge. Limit for our wastewater treatment plant. So uh, as it's shown on this slide, by twenty thirty, we'll need to meet a twelve month rolling average of a half a milligram per liter total phosphorus. Currently, we're operating at one. And our, we're, our limit is one and we're operating at about point four two. That doesn't really provide a good enough uh factor of safety or margin for error, what have you. To to operate the plant as is under that more rigid limit in perpetuity. So. Working on our process control, optimizing our processes and we're going to try and fight and work to. Get that number down to about point three five, which we believe gives us that necessary factor of safety where we can avoid. A a new building, a new improvement, but. If, if we cannot, if we cannot work our way down to this, to this threshold, uh, we're going to have to look at some sort of a. Tertiary treatment process. It's called uh. I believe one of the things that we're looking at is a biological treatment, biological phosphorus treatment or removal process. This project is not shown in any of these cash flow scenarios shown in appendix E. Frankly, because we don't know whether or not we're going to need to. And we don't have a lot of certainty about the costs. If it does become apparent, we're going to need, we're probably going to have to go before council request. To perform some sort of phosphorus optimization studies, bring recommendations to council for what what the treatment improvements would would require. And we're going to need to do that. In advance of this this 2030 window. So probably in reaching the decision point, I would say within the next five years. So Russ, Russ or Russ, we have two Russes in our wastewater division. If you have any thoughts on on this project and provide a little better, better detail than I can, chime in if you'd like.
Yeah, as I was, I didn't know if the other Russ was going to or not. Yeah, as Troy mentioned, we're not sure. If we're going to need this or how much more treatment we're going to need. With the current setup that we have, we're we're working on optimizing our phosphorus removal. We've never really had to do that. So this is. This is uncharted territory for us so far, but if we are expected to get down to a point five milligram per liter. That that's how much is in the water that's going out. We are currently at a point four two. So we're technically, we're already there. But we don't have, we don't have a lot of room to spare if there are any upsets or you always want to have a little bit of cushion with something like this. So again, this is something that we're planning for and we really just want you to be aware of this. Because it would be if indeed we do have to go down this road where we are going to require, we're going to have to look into some new technologies. Unfortunately, right now that technology is is fairly expensive. And again, this is, this is all really dependent on on how good we can do here in the next couple of years. And. You know, we'll keep you posted.
So while I have a minute, I'll break from from the the momentum of this presentation just briefly. I I mentioned we have two Russes. I don't know how many of you have met Russ Adams. As we have consolidated. Our 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 management staff a little bit consolidated duties and. Switched up roles a little bit. Russ Adams has really taken a step forward in terms of his responsibilities. And his role in our operation. He's a very young, very talented class one wastewater operator, which which are hard to come by. And then Steve and Russ as well, as we've consolidated duties and roles, they've both taken on, you know, greater workloads to get us to to function. As we have been a little bit, little bit leaner and a little bit more diverse with our skill sets. So but you guys have seen Russ. And Steve and a few of our public works committee meetings, those of you who attended. So you're all familiar with them, but just want to make note of of Russ Adams who is in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Troy. Sorry I had technical difficulties before. I would have jumped in for you, Russ. Yeah, thank you. I concur with everything Russ Strzicka said, so carry on.
Alright, so a little bit now on water plant five. And we talked about this at the beginning of the presentation. In a little bit, I'm going to refer us back to that usage chart earlier to clarify a few of these points. But. The basic conversation regarding future development in water plant five is to do with the city's desire level of service in terms of water quality. In an emergency scenario and the city's acceptable level of risk. So we're going to go back to that slide that covers our historic water usage. And what I'd like to discuss is the decision point is in the circumstances under which we would construct our fifth water plant. Again, it's our most likely to facilities expansion. Alright, so if you look at these projections. You can see these usage or demand bars crossing some of these these threshold lines for what our capacities are under different scenarios. But. There's a lot, there's a lot there to follow. So I'm trying to simplify the scenario under which. We would, we will, we would believe or we would recommend water plant five as warranted. So. 18 hour runtime on water plants is is a pretty standard threshold number. You don't want to exceed if you don't have to. So if we ever reach the point where on average during a peak demand time, are all four of our water plants running over 18 hours. To us, that's a signal that it's that it's time for water plant five. And honestly, once we approach, once we start approach approaching those runtimes. We it's time to start the planning process. And those runtimes are important for a couple of reasons. Number one, running your your equipment 24 hours a day is just hard on the equipment. And things can can wear and break. And when you lose equipment, you lose production capacity. And then also, and probably probably a greater reason is that you run 24 hours a day, you're not giving that oct for time to recharge. So that that's one scenario where we would recommend plant five being constructed. The other is a scenario where. If we were to drop one of our higher producing wells. So our highest producing well is located at plant four, well nine or 10. Russ, which one is it? Do you know off the top of your head?
I believe nine. I, Steve might know.
Alright.
It's not, it's nine.
Okay, so if we dropped well nine in a peak demand time and running our. Running our plants and our wells 24 hours a day is not enough to meet peak demand. It's it's absolutely time to build water plant five. So right now we can handle that. We had, you know, we have handled that for short durations in the past. If our if our usage projections. Cross cross that threshold line, then 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 it's definitely time for plant five. So. The the gray line and the blue line represent those two scenarios. So you've got. Our 18 hour pumping capacity is the gray line. And then the blue line is our 24 hour pumping capacity with well nine out of service. So right now. Our peak demand. Or peak daily usage, that's these red bars. That we're showing that crossing those two threshold lines, which are approximately at the same line, which which is good. If those red bars cross those blue lines, it's time for plant five. So we're showing that happening in 2040 based on adding 100 households a year. But. Again, development outpaces those expectations. We can cross those threshold lines anytime. So those are really, those are really our two. Two most important metrics in terms of our production. So the caveat with with all these comparisons though of of 18 hour pumping capacity, 24 hour with the largest well out of service versus peak demand. Is. Is that one thing we do have to depend on is if we drop, if we drop a well or a larger plant in a in a peak demand scenario, we have to do one of two things. We have to either run these water plants up to 24 hours a day. Or if we exceed that sort of demand, we would have to make up the difference with unfiltered water. So we have a couple standby wells that we can. We can dose with chlorine and run unfiltered water and we can meet just about any demand scenario. We can, we can go up to. Almost double our our peak demand if we're if we're running our standby wells. So you might say, okay, so we're fine. We can just run our standby wells, even if we drop one plant, maybe two. But the issue with that scenario is if we're running unfiltered water for a long duration. It will be a lesser water quality, which our public may or may not be willing to accept. So. For any of you who have well water, you know, it's unfiltered water. So most of you have to have some sort of softening system and iron filtration. Unit at your home to keep to keep the the taste quality better and to keep the rust staining away. So if if we were to have to run unfiltered water out of our out of our standby wells. That's the, that's those sorts of things, rust spots in your whites, those sorts of things are things that people would encounter again in an emergency scenario. So we as staff believe that operating this way in an emergency scenario is perfectly acceptable. However, if city council, if our public does not believe that in an emergency scenario. Or or a large, a big demand scenario with some major maintenance at one of our plants that we have to temporarily drop. If a reduction in water quality under one of those scenarios is not acceptable. Then essentially, we would need to build water plant five right now. And again, we're not recommending that, but. We just need to consider for ourselves and understand that if we are in an emergency scenario in peak demand. Either we have to be okay with running potentially lower quality, yet safe water for a certain condition, or we basically need to build plant five now. So. I've actually boiled that that down a little bit to make it simpler, but does anybody have any questions about about those specific scenarios right now?
The other thing, if I just may may add one thing quick, Troy, when we when we are using the standby wells. The standby wells do not have any iron filtration or iron removal. And as he mentioned, there would be a water quality issue, you know, the residents may may notice. Color or taste, but also it plays into the system if if we're. If we're putting, if we're not filtering the water, removing the iron, that means we're putting it into our system, which could lead to a shorter lifespan. The water towers, I mean, there could be, you know, corrosion on the inside of those sped up. Because we haven't removed all the iron that we can from the water. So it's it's a water quality issue, but also there is. There is a percentage that long term, the the emergency wells. Would probably not be the best, you know, on our system.
Hey, Russ, we've done, we've had to do this before. If you like, if you look at the charts, it's 2005.
Oh, yeah.
We we've done it. We had to do it before.
But for, I'm saying for like long, long, you know.
No, but I'm I'm going to just the water quality issues that we had. I mean, we were putting phosphate in to try and squander the iron. We were feeding with chlorine. I mean, the water was safe to drink.
Oh, yeah.
However, when people see what comes out of their faucet and you you will see it more in bats, you know, in bigger volumes. So when it was all done and we got, things got caught up, we had to go and, you know, flush. You know, it just doesn't, it wasn't just isolated. We're running well 12 here in Legend Lakes. And it was obviously worse around here, but it it does transfer out into the system farther. We had to flush. Prior to or even our flushing season to accommodate the residents because of the quality issues.
Yeah. So yeah, thanks. Thanks for providing that history, Steve. As I mentioned, so for those of you who aren't familiar with Steve's history, Steve came up through the water division. So was a water operator and saw a lot of the way this played out. These peak demand years back in the mid 2000s. So his his history on the matter gives, you know, gives us some good context. So. That that's water plant five. So. Let's move back forward in the presentation. So these these two items here, water tower painting and water main replacement would both be associated with their own base fee. The two towers we're we're looking at in the next 10 years are Bull Valley Road Water Tower, Tower Four. It's a million gallon tower and Sioux Lane Tower, Tower One. Painting will be based upon. Inspections and A W W A recommendations. So I don't know if any of you have ever have driven Bull Valley Road lately and taken a look at Tower Four. But it looks kind of dirty. It's actually, that's actually not because it's dirty. We hired a tank cleaning contractor to to clean some of the mold mildew that was on it this past spring. What's left there that looks like dirt is actually sections where bare steel is showing and the paint is is flaked off. And that's, that's why we're looking at needing to redo the painting at some point soon. And just, this is just, no, this is not just an aesthetic issue. If towers are allowed to corrode. They're typically prone to pinhole leaks. Patches have to be welded on fabricated. And then ultimately, if enough corrosion occurs due to negligence or neglect, their service lives can be significantly shortened. So I believe. A common recommendation for tower paintings every five years. This this tower is newer than that. If the paint started to fail early, we don't really know why. But it's there now. And then the other projects associated with its own base fee. That we would also be looking at, and it's going to be one of our options, we're going to lay out for you later on, is water main replacements. So. It's essentially a 10 year program of our current 5% worse water main locations. These projects are highlighted. If you look at our 10 year capital projection in appendix D, these projects are highlighted in blue. Total program cost is $4.8 million. Water main is expensive. It's tedious. And it's tough to do, but we do have some locations that have repetitive breaks. And a long break history, which caused some real hardships for a small and very real segment of our community. One such occurrence which occurred that caused us to look at this. Was on Oak Drive. Just a few months, more than that now, April. And the mayor actually got got pulled into that one. So he's got a little bit of history and context on on this on this issue. So Mayor Jed, I don't know if you had any on on this option, but. Like to hear yours.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Troy. So yeah, obviously, you know, water main replacements are are very costly after this issue of a water main break on Oak that Troy was mentioning. It was the third time the break has happened in front of their home. And their home sits unfortunately down and so the garage actually goes down and it's in Lakeland Park. Which a lot of those homes have their driveway go down into a one car garage. They flooded their basement, what, three times, I believe. And so when, you know, so when this, when this types of things happen and it causes. Havoc to our constituents and so forth, we have to really think about for the future of what we're going to do with these water main replacements. And obviously with the cost of these water main replacements, I would love, you know, I sat with Troy, I said, Troy, let's get this water main replaced in front of this house. Let's go further down. And then he gave me the number and I'm like, yeah, okay, well. You know, maybe we'll work with the guy. So we actually worked with him and and paid for some costs of getting rid of the garbage and so forth. Because it was the right thing to do, considering it was the third time that it happened. So. You know, I I think this is very important that we need to have this conversation. And I think it's very important that we move forward and and we come up with a plan financially to start getting these projects completed and. Take care of our infrastructure. If we don't do that, it's only going to, and we might all say, you know, I won't be here in four years, but the next person can handle it. But at the end of the day, we keep pushing the envelope. We're going to have major issues and we got to remember the staff is going to be dealing with this crap even after we're gone as elected officials. So. I think now is the time to come up with a game plan for this. Thanks, Troy.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, and then the last project we'd be looking at. More of a program than a project would be sanitary sewer lining. So the the big risk with delaying sanitary sewer lining would would be major sewer backups due to point failures. This program would be a preemptive approach taken to this issue. We don't have. A, we don't have point failures en masse. That that really are our burden at this time, but the age of our clay pipes is. Looking out ahead, these these clay pipes are aging. It's a it's a different generation of construction. And they're all reaching is considered the the normal predicted end of their service life. So approximately 25 miles of sanitary sewer. Maines are made in town here of clay material pipe, 50 to 100 years old. Pretty much everything is 1960 or older. As it ages, it begins web crap and becomes more prone to point failure. So a lot of this pipe is is reaching the end of its service life. We're proposing basically a 20 year program. So even though I've got a 10 year capital projection, we're we're proposing a funding level for this program. That basically would allow us to line all of our clay over 20 year period. We believe it's it's feasible, it's manageable, it's sustainable financially. And also not burdensome financially. It comes out to roughly $325,000 a year. And you know, I mentioned before, this is a bit of a preemptive approach. We don't have point failures all over the place. But sanitary sewer replacement will probably cost you 300 bucks a foot, lining costs you 30, and it essentially gives you a brand new pipe. So. For a for a fraction of that cost. We can, we can basically carry out the serviceability of our our pipes for two generations. And again, at 10% of the cost, it is warranted. And in my professional opinion, it is recommended. It's not, it's not uncommon in terms of what other agencies are doing. So Steve, I know you've had, Steve has. Done a lot of the cleaning and televising, all of it actually of our sanitary sewers. And Steve, I'm sure you've got some thoughts on what this program would entail and what the condition of our sanitary sewers are.
Oh, yeah, I mean, when you. You know, just figuring out the dollars, it it seems like a lot. But just lining the pipe without getting into the technical specifics of it, it, once you line it, it's good for the other state another 50 years. So versus, you know, when you're talking $300 a foot, you know, some of our sanitary is really deep, some of it's over 20 feet deep. So you're talking about, you know, something that is expensive, you know, we can't do that in house, you know, anything beyond nine, 10 feet, we can't. Do and a lot of our sanitary is deeper than that. So, you know, this is kind of, you know. you know, I'd say pennies on the dollar to keep this infrastructure working and up to standard so we don't run into these problems, you know, down the line. There's, you know, we're starting to see more and more of the web cracking, you know, beginning as we're looking at the old clay tile. You know, we're starting to find, you know, some significant spots, you know, but they're still at a point to where they can be lined. Once they get beyond that, you're digging it up and doing a spot repair at a minimum, if not replacing the entire line. So this to me is kind of a, you know, a no brainer to something we really need to start moving on.
Thanks, Steve. All right. And obviously, with the discussion of rates and base fees, I'm sure you all have some interest in how our rates stack up with other communities. So following comps were gathered for your reference. The calculation as far as how we came to these bi monthly rates is in Appendix C of your attachments. So we tried to basically make apples and apples comparisons amongst other comparable communities. So these rates are based upon six thousand gallons of usage. That's that is higher usage. That's more, I would say, for a family of four, five, six family, you know, bigger, bigger families, parents raising children. And and these are how these are how we stack up. If we were to, you can see ours, bi monthly, six thousand gallons is almost a hundred thirty eight dollars. Reduce that usage to about four thousand, which I would say is typical of more of a two to four person household, the bi monthly charge would be about a hundred and five. And you can see how we stack up with other communities. We're basically right in the middle amongst our rural communities. Algonquin, Crystal Lake are substantially higher than us. Mundaline is not in the county, so it's a little bit different, but you know, we're pretty well in line with them. Woodstock is just below us. Cary and Huntley are below us. And sometimes these rates can be a little bit confusing in that one firm can be cheaper, more expensive than the other, but we all kind of leapfrog each other in terms of where we're at with paying off our debts and expanding our facilities. So just because Cary and Woodstock and Huntley are cheaper than us now, if they're on the verge of a major facilities expansion and in addition of a debt service fee, they could, they could very well leapfrog us. So and then just just for your interest, I find it interesting. Going on Lake Michigan water is an expensive proposition. There's been no serious discussion of that here and nor will there be, but just one county over, a little bit of a part of one county over. These are what the rates are in Wakanda Lakes. They're part of C L C Jawa, and they draw Lake Michigan water. It's it's an expensive system. It's high end. So we talked a little bit about these different projects and the base fee is associated with them. So this this page outlines these base fee options that we could select based upon a desired level of service and based upon what we value in terms of our 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 level of service we want and our what we're willing to accept in terms of management of risk. So what we did was we quantified all of the city's water and sewer assets and projected each maintenance or replacement, maintenance treatment, replacement treatment over the next ten years and programmed that out. That's shown in that Appendix D capital projection. And then we also add to that capital projection, and those are the highlighted rows or columns, rows of these different options. And then we took a look at each cash fee option and created a cash, a base fee option and created a cash flow projection with some some rules as far as maintaining minimum funding balances, both for operating and capital. And we just played it out. It's kind of a similar process to what Derek does with our general fund operating budget and our general fund capital. So the rules we set for ourselves were we took Route Thirty One Utility Relocation and kept it separate. We tried to maintain a nine day operating balance in the water sewer fund. We made sure we retained the capital to pay for both Water Plant Five and the airation improvements at the wastewater treatment plant with all remaining funds available for capital. So there's five options for fees here. And with existing base fees, we can afford to maintain our baseline fundamental maintenance and replacement functions, but not much else. So what we can do is we can replace, we can do capital equipment, capital vehicle replacement for our water sewer funded vehicles. And we can replace the the major systems, we can do capital replacement of our and maintenance of our major systems and our lift stations, our water treatment plants and our wells. But that's it. It's kind of taking what we have now and we can take care of it in perpetuity in terms of our vehicles, equipment, our facilities. It doesn't really take care of our distribution system. Water wise, it doesn't take care of our collection system, wastewater wise, it doesn't take care of our storage in terms of our water towers. My apologies. Skip ahead of myself there. All right. Oh, so so the, sorry, I'm gonna circle back here. So each fee, so this dollar fifty base fee increase, that essentially pays for water tower painting. Four seventy five base fee increase pays for that sanitary sewer lining program, but not the water towers. If you do towers and sewer lining, it's a six forty base fee increase. And then the most expensive base fee increase we could look at is if we took sewer lining and water tower painting plus tacked in that ten year water main replacement program. It'd be just shy of fifteen dollars. If you take those base fees and apply them to those current rate projections existing, we're just shy of one thirty eight. If we do water towers, we go to one thirty nine twenty eight. If we do sanitary sewers, we go to one forty two fifty three. If we do both, we go to one forty four and so on and so forth. So you take a look at those range of options, if you go back to the comparable rates for other communities, we're still essentially right in the middle. And the the obvious option for me and for us as staff is for sure to do water tower painting and sanitary sewer lining. Water main replacement, I obviously we 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 agree it's a good project. It's it's tougher to bite off financially, but again, if we did that, that wouldn't be a mistake either. But either way you slice it, we still come down right in the lower comparable communities, even with these additional bases that we're asking you to consider. So this next slide, I think it's important to have this conversation because we need we need to be aware of how we're operating the system when we choose to defer capital maintenance on specific items. So what is depreciation? Well, it's defined on the screen. That's just the Webster's definition. But what I'm trying to illustrate here is that every year, our water and sewer systems are losing value, equity and service life. And at some point in the future, this value will need to be released. It's just a matter of how we choose to do it. We can do it proactively or we can do it with our backs against the wall. And as you can see on on the slide here, if you take a look at the annual city budget, we actually quantify our depreciation numbers and we're required to as a part of our audit process. But those depreciation numbers are deliberately held off of our off of our operating rates or the or the usage rates. So we quantify our operating rates strictly based upon personnel, materials, fuel, what have you, our pure operating costs that we literally have to pay. Depreciation is quantified. It is shown in our in our operating costs because we're required to for our audit requirements. But then we hold it off our rates. So even though it's not accounted for our rates, I'd be willing to bet that Nycor, Comet and AT and T account for it in theirs. And we are utility just as they are. And I want to add, because I throw a lot of numbers at you, I throw a lot of costs at you. I I want to make it clear that our intention is not to force any of your hands as far as raising rates or fees, but rather to have an honest conversation about how you want to function. Because the truth is, we can keep the base fees exactly the same and function just fine. As I mentioned, our baseline functions, vehicles, equipment and capital equipment replacement within our water production facilities, our wells and our lift stations can all be handled. And we miss out on those opportunities for tower painting, sewer lining and water main replacements. So if we do just the very, very baseline functions, we can be just fine with the current level of base fees. So in short, we can function that way. We can operate at a little bit higher level of risk because we're not being proactive. But we can operate cheaper. In short, it'll be a bit cheaper, but it's gonna come at higher risk. And if some sort of critical failure happens, then we would lose control over the process because it'd be happening, you know, in real time, some sort of significant failure of our sanitary sewer system. It's one of those point failures we're talking about. If we take a more proactive approach, it will not eliminate our risk, but it will allow for better planning. You can't ever eliminate risk. And then some of these other raised fee options might be desired due to some of the hardship scenarios we discussed with the water main. And it's important to remember with with water and wastewater, these are matters of human health and welfare, and they merit being taken seriously. So our recommendation, at a minimum, we would recommend the six forty base fee option, just because it covers those towers and the sanitary sewer lining and and sanitary sewer lining, you know, in terms of replacement costs versus rehab cost makes that for us, it makes it a very easy decision. So with all that being said, we're looking for some direction moving forward. We we just kind of want your thoughts as far as are, is there any agreement as far as the necessity of some of these projects that are associated with the new base fees? Is there an interest in a base fee increase? And if so, for what items? Really, we're really at three items, water tower painting, sanitary sewer lining and and water main replacement. And at this time, we'd love to hear council's thoughts as far as if we are to pursue pursue this any further as far as as far as looking at basis.
Thank you, Troy. Appreciate the presentation. I will go ahead and open up for discussion by council. Let me glad behind.
Yeah. One other thing that I wanted to bring up, you were talking about the Oak Street breaks. Troy, this question would be for you now. The main reason why we're having the breaks over there more than anything else is because most of those lines are in very unstable type soils. Just like the base of the roads. I mean, there's certain areas out there that are probably have as much as sixteen feet of peat down in some of those areas near Oak. And that's been probably the cause in my net rights as far as why we have so many breaks over there.
The that that's that's absolutely something that could certainly be part of it. Soil conditions not, don't just affect the stability of the pipe. They at times, in terms of their chemical properties, can corrode the pipe, wear out the pipe. I I'm gonna have Steve chime in on this one because he's probably got a little better insight on it than I do. It's all, I think it's also transite water main for some.
Lakeland Park is all virtually all transite except for some stuff that we've replaced in in house. So I I would lean that it's probably more towards the fact, the material of the that it that's in the ground, the transite, and it 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 doesn't tend to break the same as, say, ductile iron where you get a lot of circle, you know, circle breaks. Over there, when it breaks, it longitudinally splits the pipe apart. And that's why there's so much water and so much damage.
I mean, have we looked at, are there any long term ideas as far as what can be done to eliminate? Because needless to say, I mean, it's the same problem that's reoccurred at least three times in the last fifteen, twenty years that I can remember. You'd like to be able to do what you have to do to make sure that that hopefully wouldn't happen again. So.
Replacing with plastic pipe would be what would be what you should do. That's what we did on Prairie. I don't know if you remember, Alderman Glad, we had a few issues on on Prairie, just kind of around the corner from Oak. We replaced, we replaced about two hundred feet of pipe in the house there. And maybe not quite that long. It was a a little bit of, you know, with four inch. However, EPA rule now, you you can't, you can't put four inch pipe back in there. It's been a minimum of eight inch. This stretch is much longer than that. I mean, it's not, it's not an in house project with all this amount of services that we'd have to run reconnect. Because we 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 looked at this to see what we could do in house. And that's what we did recently. We replaced approximately another thirty feet of pipe. So basically, at this point, from his edge of his property to his neighbors, through his neighbor's property is is plastic. We also added some storm sewer to, in case this, we thought we had mitigated about every risk to have this happen to him again. We put in an air chamber to, in case it was a, you know, you know, waters, air hammers. We also added a culvert across the street to alleviate water to get into that big storm sewer that that runs down Oak. This just happened to break in the absolute worst spot it could. But there's nothing to say that if it breaks down the street a little bit towards, you know, Peterson Park that in this manner, that the way his house is built or down the street, there's another one, you know, Razor Ranch with the driveway. Just just the mere, you know, geometry of it. If there's enough water, that's where it's going.
Right. So Alderman Glad, this, that, that example is more of just a for instance, but there's a lot of for instances out there in terms of people that endure hardship when these when these breaks happen. So Oak, for example, that's actually been included in previous C I Ps. It's it's included in this ten year program. So we can, these absolute worst locations, we can absolutely pluck them off here and there if we so choose. But based upon this projection we've laid out of our of our fundamental stuff in Appendix D, and you can, you can go down the list. It's 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 vehicle replacement every twelve years. It's heavy equipment replacement every every twenty. It's lift station controls and pump replacement every twenty, thirty years. It's it's all fundamental stuff. And when we quantify our fundamental stuff, it comes out roughly to what our current base fees are. And anything beyond that fundamental stuff, water main replacement, sanitary sewer lining, water tower painting, that we can do that stuff, but we could potentially short ourselves on the back end by burning through our capital too quickly.
I feel that we've got some major problems over in that part of the Lakeland Park subdivision. Could we possibly put that as a discussion item for the next public works meeting?
That that specific location, sure.
Just just that east side seems to be a a problem as far as getting water out to those areas on a normal basis. I remember years back, we had a fire out there down one street. And I remember where the fire department had to go to the next hydrant because they weren't getting any water out of one.
Two odd, two, the water main broke split in two places over there.
Yeah.
David McCardle, your screen is being shared right now.
I don't know what that means.
Exit out of your screen.
Troy, well, how do I do that?
Tell you what, can I stop it? No, I can't.
I'm I'm trying to do it right now. I'm trying to unshare a screen. Sorry.
It's just a tabulation of his hourly rates here going that show.
All right. Well, yeah, so anyways, Alderman Glad, again, that's that's a very specific item in a list of, you know, a hundred items, we'll say, in this Appendix D. So again, we're I'm I'm trying to get get a sense of where we're at in terms of if we are to consider these programs and these base fees that are associated with these programs.
Just after we do a discussion item at the next public works meeting, just to go over it, you know, so that if nothing else, the committees at least looked at it and had some discussion and at least we know a little bit more in depth of where we're at with it and what we'll have to do in the future.
Yes, we can discuss that on September twenty seventh.
Okay. Another thing is, is we were talking about the widening of Thirty One. And maybe that's another one that we need to discuss or whatever, but when the widening of Thirty One happens, it is going to be one heck of a mess going through McHenry, north and south. It started getting through, which is going to probably take and burn a lot of our other roads such as Crystal Lake Road, Green Street. You know, the people are going to need to get across going north and you know, it's gonna be backed up a lot at certain times because of the construction and whatnot. And we just need to be, again, proactive as far as looking at that. And it'd be interesting of what we're gonna do as far as that traffic and where we're gonna filter it.
Well, as I mentioned, we contracted with Patrick, who's the Phase Two designer to do our utility relocation design. So again, we have that good line of communication with the design firm that's gonna be doing the maintenance of traffic. So again, we have that good line of communication with the design firm that's going to be doing the maintenance of traffic plans and preparing the plans. So I I I think we can absolutely get whatever assurances we can, the city's interest will be protected during the project. Alderman Miller, you had a question?
Um, am I muted? No, I'm not. I just wanted to thank you for the comprehensive report. Obviously, I feel your pain that beyond just the basic fundamentals, you're, you don't have a budget or you don't have enough money in the works to take care of the upcoming maintenance items that you have to take care of. I mean, even just talking about there's no paint on the Bull Valley Water Tower. When you look up there from the ground, who knew that? I thought it was dirt. And you've just explained to me that it's flick paint. So clearly, there's a need for us to look and evaluate these requested base fee inclusions. So I'm grateful that you spent the time to create the report, give us all the appendices that are here. It was a a great deal of information and a semblage of information, and it's a tough decision to make. Nobody wants to add additional items to a citizen's bill. But if we don't do it now, kicking the can down the road isn't going to help us. So I just want to thank you for the information and clearly Public Works Committee meeting will be lively. I plan on attending, even though I'm not on your committee, and I'm hoping that I'm called upon for input.
Thank you, Sue. Alderman Sandy?
Thank you, Mayor. So the overall presentation was very informative. There was, there's definitely a lot of information, a lot of information that's going to take a long time to absorb and understand. And if he's, you know, if if he wants us to, you know, put a price point individually. I mean, I'm willing to, you know, say to you that somewhere around that four seventy five base fee to the four sixty, six forty base fee is something I would be comfortable in reviewing and moving forward in that window. The one question I see when I, when you look at those two base fees is is that the on the higher number there, it would be including the Bull Valley Water Tower, which Alderman Miller just mentioned, and also the Sioux Lane Tower. I guess I don't want to, well, I I don't want to put more on the shoulders of the Public Works Department, but I want to say that when you look at the water tower numbers as compared to other portions of these projects, the lining and and other larger projects like the Route thirty one, I would say that, you know, if it's, if if the lower number comes in, what I just brought up in regards to the four seventy five, then you may need to, you know, sharpen your pencils in regards to the painting numbers for the two towers. But the lining, I I I think is 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 it is a key and vital project that is really an investment in the future and long term future for the city. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yes. I'd be really hard pressed to increase the fees on anything as far as water store, but have we investigated any like grant fees?
So yes, we have. Actually, in anticipation of some sort of in infrastructure bill coming out and with the state DCO programs throwing money around all over the place this past spring, we actually put in grant applications for the painting of Water Tower Four, a million dollar sanitary sewer lining program. Those two specifically. And I think we also put in for Home Ramble. There's a drainage project out there that we put in. None of them have been selected. We really haven't heard match back from them. So the way, so for those of you been around for a while, the city's got a pretty long history of securing I dot funding. I dot funding, as funny as it sounds to say, is actually easier to secure pure grant funding from the IPA. It's it's federal money. It's it's much more tied to, I would say, the economic circumstances of the city that is requesting the funding. So so basically, the more impoverished the community is, the better chance it has of of getting funding. Otherwise, grants with IPA, SRF loans or grant, grant, grants rather than SRF loans, which is what we're paying off the wastewater plant with. Grants aren't really that easy to get when it comes to water sewer projects. Most communities pay for water sewer projects with low interest loans, and that's how we're paying for the wastewater plant right now. So not for sake of trying. Like I said, we put in those grants just just about a year ago, and we will continue to do so. But I would say counting on those grants as a matter, as as our strategy for capital planning, I I don't believe will be approved.
Thank you.
Alderman Strack, go ahead. You're on mute. Alderman Strack, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Troy, help me if you would. You, as the new guy, I'm trying to get my arms wrapped around a lot of this information, but also the age of some of the other equipment we're not talking about. We're not talking about the current equipment in those wells. We're talking about the infrastructure that's there now. Can you just give me, again, I'm I'm not looking for exacts from you. I'm looking to understand of the infrastructure we have now, what does it look like maintenance wise? Not doing these improvements, but just what we have on the table right now. Are there items that are going to be capital expenditure items that could be an issue as well? So we talked about one of those wells dropping. What does that look like in relation as well?
Yeah. So that's, that's all quantified. When I mentioned that baseline level of capital expenditures from the existing base fees, that's all quantified in there. So if you refer to appendix D, for each well, there are basically two maintenance rehabilitation treatment that we we recommend on regular intervals, and intervals do vary a little bit depending upon the history on that well. But in general, we recommend a a aquifer rehab and replacement of pumping equipment. And roughly, you're talking every ten to twenty years. On lift stations, we're talking specifically about replacement of pumps and controls. You can also line wet wells, but that's a pretty expensive proposition. We don't really have anything that's super near needing that treatment. Russ, I don't know if you wanted to chime in, Adams, that is, if you want to chime in a little bit on the maintenance of these lift stations as far as the major capital maintenance that goes on with the lifts.
And let me just, again, Russ, before you jump in. So the baseline now, what you're saying, Troy, is that's going to cover our typical maintenance program for everything else. Nothing catastrophic out of the ordinary, but all of the normal scheduled stuff will be covered at the current baseline.
Yes, that's, that is, that is wells, pumping equipment, that is lifts, that is vehicles and equipment. And again, our assumption as far as the maintenance intervals are, they're, they're not extreme at all. We're talking about twelve years on a vehicle. We're talking about twenty on a, on a piece of heavy equipment. We're talking about twenty for both pumps and controls. We're, we're not talking about super aggressive timelines. We're talking about long timelines that are financially feasible.
Okay. That's what I needed. Russ, and jump in if you feel like it. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that schedule on that. And I apologize, just being the new guy, I want to make sure I'm clear on it.
Yeah, I know, Troy. Troy summed it up really well. If you have any, I mean, any other questions specific to the wastewater side. But no, the other, the existing base fee covers all of the existing equipment that is currently deployed throughout our system.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hey, Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, one of the things that we need to keep in mind is is it's not easy to take an and after increases in our water rates. You know, we're going to be looking at, I've already had a couple of calls from the article about the garbage. You know, as far as the fact that Prairie Land would like everybody to have a tote and whatnot. It's going to be the same way with the water sewer rates. And every time you see a water sewer rate, you hear a few grumblings. But the thing is, is you hear it and it goes away. If you wind up and I, I'll go back to the problems they had in McHenry Shores many years ago with the water systems and whatnot. When you have bad water and people aren't getting the quality of water when they're paying for it, you're going to hear it, and you're going to hear it, you're going to keep hearing it. So we've got to make sure that we can keep our quality of water up to snuff almost at almost all costs. I mean, needless to say, we can't just go crazy, but we've got to do the best that we possibly can to keep our water quality where it's at, if not better.
Alderman Harding.
I just wanted to say just briefly here, I think it's best that we go at a proactive approach. Even before you mentioned that the six forty mark, and that's what I was kind of leaning towards. And just knowing that all that infrastructure get, you know, replaced or worked on, you know, we, I just like Sue mentioned, we kick it down the road, kick the can down the road, it's just going to be more expensive. So I I'm leaning towards it six forty base fee increase. And I guess, because I just rather be proactive. And I guess my other question is, how often does a well go out? I know, I know it's it's hard to predict. I know you can't predict it, but I mean, does it happen often? Does it happen once a year? Or are we like at well number two is saying like, hey, you know, it's on its last legs or that one usually goes out. I don't, how does that work? Just so, just so I know.
It's a, it's a little bit sporadic in nature and actually so we can't perfectly predict these. But we, on the whole, over the long haul, we, you know, these sort of intervals are reasonable in terms of the overall cost projection. And and Russ, when he basically, when water and wastewater consol, operations were consolidated under him, he was baptized by fire with one of the wells at Plant Four dropping last summer, which if, for those of you remember the expenditure, that was actually put in front of you guys for approval last June, maybe? Russ, if you want to chime in on on that one.
Sorry, just, yeah, trying to unmute me. No, Scott was still here. So that was back. I believe that was back in April, may have been.
Yeah. So that was, that was pulled out of our operating budget at that time. But
Oh, nineteen, yes, it was. It was the summer. Excuse me, I'm getting my years confused. It was the summer of nineteen. Yeah, it was June.
Yeah. And then Steve, you've probably got a little better history as far as how often we lose some of these, these wells or have failures in terms of the equipment or just need the aquifer rehab with the high rip process.
Yeah, I mean, that's the scary part. There is unfortunately, I mean, you can kind of gauge, I guess, about how long and you can start kind of testing them to see if, you know, you're losing. You know, if you think you're going to lose it, you can pre, you know, preemptively pull them and take a look at them. I don't know how cost effective that really is because it's expensive to pull a well. Most often than not, you know, it goes down and then you know, you, whether you lose a pump or you know, the the electric line going up goes, I mean, there's so many different variables to it. That it's next to impossible to predict other than just kind of keeping an eye on your, you know, keep an eye. You can, you can start to see some things like you might see your production start to come down. So then you might know that it's time to, you know, do the high rip process on the aquifer to get your water back. You know, or, you know, your screwing could just be getting plugged. Which, you know, so like I said, there's a lot of different variables and over the years, you know, you, you think you're, you know, you think one's good for a long time and all of a sudden that's the one that goes out on you. So.
I know it's hard.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but in the grand scheme, I mean, I think a lot of times it's, it's basically come out of, if correctly I'm wrong here, Troy, but a lot of times we've taken out contractual or you know, a lot, you know, when you pull a well, you know, at this point, it's a lot of times just changing the pump and motor, maybe fixing some column pipe. So it's not, at this point, you know, we're, there's no talk of drilling a new well or anything like that where it, you know, where you really be talking about an expense.
Yeah. So it's, it's, as Steve mentioned with the randomness, these are our best projection of when these are going to become necessary. But the way we've paid for them in the past, they pretty much just hit our operating budget. However, they do whenever they occur. And if you look at the history on the water sewer operating budget, it'll be, there's a lot of ebb and flow to it because it really depends on when these, these bigger, more expensive failures hit. And that's why there can be some variability in in those accounts. And then ultimately those hit the rates. So this is creating that, putting those in in the capital fund so that the the resources are there and that our operating rates can hopefully start to be a little more predictable. Possibly the the expansion of our operating rates can slow down a little bit. And then one, one important thing to note is that, you know, we've laid out this staff attrition process mostly for our general funded items. We are looking at something similar on the water sewer fund side of things. And those, those positions, if we hit those, those fundamental staffing levels based on our operations and maintenance, at some point, when those positions dropped, those are going to correlate either to a, a reduction in operating rates or at least a dampening of the growth of operating rates. So we're, we're really trying to draw a firm line between operating and capital to get control of our finances. And, you know, I know, I know it's a lot to take in, but I believe at this point, you've seen what our philosophy has been on the general fund side of things and the results delivered with the road program. And we're trying to plot that same logic of really fighting tooth and nail for financial control on the water sewer fund side of things.
So I think from this point, we move forward and we'll bring in this to the September Public Works Committee. Have them talk through it and any council members that want to obviously attend and give their input is obviously always welcome. So thank you, Troy, and your entire team for putting this all together. And hopefully we come up with a game plan here after it comes out of committee.
Okay. So as, as far as send it back to committee then, is the goal, we send it back to committee, discuss whether or not we're going to adopt a base fee increase, and then committee brings forward a recommendation for approval to council at a later date.
That's my suggestion, yeah.
All right, we can.
I was hoping we can move forward with some type of plan to come back, but if we're going to go into committee, seems like a few of them want to go to committee. So let's is that, is that what everyone would like to do, bring it to committee and discuss it a little further there?
Yeah. I think we need to check it fairly well.
Everyone else? Alderman Sandy?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with going back to committee, but just, you know, I I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more from the other council members, you know, everyone can attend a committee. I get it. But I'd like to give Troy a little bit more focus of what we're going to be presenting in committee in regards to can we move forward on on potentially some of these fees? Are we as a council, maybe holding back to do any fees? I just want to make sure that, not necessarily that we've picked that number already, but if we're going to move forward, okay, let's, let's move forward in regards to an initiative of potentially some type of fees coming down the road soon. Or we're moving forward to figure out we're going to tell this department to hold its own and try to deal with, we can deal with without any bumping of fees. I I just, I guess I want to get a better feeling from from the other members.
So now, I mean, are you all opposed to bringing this back as a discussion item to, as a committee of the whole versus just the, you know, if everyone's going to be participating in a public works committee or everyone's going to be attending, why aren't we just bringing it back to council for discussion and have that discussion as a committee as a whole? Are you, are you in favor of that? I think that's the best. I mean, that way everyone kind of gives their input. Everyone's here.
I'm comfortable with that, too. I don't want to speak for everybody.
I mean, I think that, I think that would honestly be the best. I think, Derek, if we put it on a meeting that, obviously, this can be a lengthy conversation. But I think we put it on a, a meeting that's a little light when it comes down to action items.
Yeah. I mean, what I heard, what I heard from some council members is, I mean, it is a lot of information. Like Troy did the presentation for us and, you know, it's a lot of information to take in and go through it. And, you know, I don't think the goal was to put council on the spot tonight to make a decision. So I understand wanting to really let absorb the information and have further thought on it, further discussion on it. So, yeah, it's no problem. I will, I will put it on as a future discussion item. And and I don't, I I won't say that there's a rush with this. Troy and I have talked about it, but we do need some direction in staff so we can start setting up from a capital standpoint, how we move forward. So I wouldn't say it's a rush, but it's something that we'd like to, to deal with now before we get into the next budget cycle so that we can better plan for these things.
Is, I have a question for, for council. Is there any information that was not presented tonight that you would like to see at this, at this committee meeting?
Alderman Sandy? Did you have some?
I, I raised early, it wasn't to answer that question, it was just to say to all the It was just to say to all the members of the council to, by all means, reach out to Troy because he'll gladly do a one on one in his office or wherever and and go through more specifics with you. And I'll let lead the floor to, I think, Alderman Miller.
Go ahead, Alderman Miller, go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to agree that I think this should be a discussion of the whole, of all of us versus just the committee, because I think we all have input. And although none of us likes increasing fees, we, you know, we all get that. This, this becomes the same discussion we had with roads. With the lack of funds, nothing gets done. So the reality is, we have to create money to get the projects done. Otherwise, nothing is going to get done. And if nothing gets done, it just becomes more expensive. We all know that maintenance is less expensive than replacement. So let's create the money to do the maintenance to let the next couple generations not have to spend more money than we can spend now. And we've already realized that Director Troy is an amazing guy at magically creating money if we give him some latitude. And he just made us four million dollars to do like roads. So I'm expecting that if we magically say, we'll give you some extra money to do some water projects, that he's going to multiply that money somehow, and we're going to have some major water projects on, right, Troy?
Under promise, over deliver.
I like it. So I do think that we need to discuss this as a whole. That way, it's decided and we can live with the decision as a whole. Otherwise, I see public works doing a decision, then we kick it up to council. Council kicks it around and changes the decision. So I really do think we just need to embrace it and kick it around as a whole at the next meeting or the next schedule availability.
I agree. All right, Derek, we'll have a conversation regarding that and see when we can do that. Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Yeah, are we doing it as a regular council agenda item or are we doing it as a committee at all? Everybody keeps saying committee at all, but our administrator's talking about adding it on to a a regular city council meeting. So are we going to do this as a committee of the whole and have a special meeting to discuss this? Or are we going to do it and just add it to a city council meeting?
Derek and I will have that discussion and see how we want to handle this, depending on what's coming up on the meetings coming up.
What does council want to do? What does the council feel comfortable with as far as the whole council to discuss this? Do we need a lot of time? Or do we just need to go over the pin, you know, the certain bullet points or what? I mean, how does the rest of the council feel? Do they feel that we need a lot of time to discuss this? Or do they think after thinking about what what was presented tonight, that they won't need as much time? I just think that we need to, it's an important decision. And I just think we need to give the council as a whole as much time as they feel they need to to discuss this in that rut to through.
Alderman Glad, obviously, that's our goal. And once again, I'll talk to Derek and put it on a meeting where we have enough time to have this discussion, hopefully, where there's not a lot of action items. Or if we have to do a committee of the whole, we will do that. Any other questions, comments? No, all right, perfect. Unfort- unfortunately, but fortunately, we are going to have to go into executive session. I do have David, he got kicked off the line here, but he, I do have David McCarty here. David, do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, we're ready to go into close.
Yeah, we're ready to go into close executive session. So this is going to be regarding property acquisition.
Acquisition, yeah.
Yeah. Sale, okay.
Yeah, so so it's setting the listing price in the statute site. Whoever's taking notes here, Tricia.
Okay.
It's five, five I L C S one twenty slash two C six, setting the sale price of real estate.
Tricia, I'll get you that information following the meeting, the five I L C S, so we'll get you that.
Thank you. I was having a hard time here.
Yeah, he's on my cell phone. So, yeah, so we'll go ahead and go into closed session. Everyone, staff, only director is going to be on this call. Everyone else can get off. I want to thank Public Works for everything you did tonight. And, yeah, any public.
Why don't we add to that line that we will not come out of closed session because there won't be any action taken. We'll just immediately adjourn.
Okay, so we will not come out of executive. I got it. We won't come out of executive session. We'll actually just adjourn. There's no action items coming after after close, so. All right, Alderman Strack?
Do you need a motion for that?
Yep, we'll go, yep, ask for a motion to go into executive session. Alderman Strack for motion second.
Yep.
I'll second, yep, I'll second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Sandy?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah.
Alderman McClatchy? Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Awesome. All right.